So everyone, reminder we are live captioning our meetings. Please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. And please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. This is Mary Sullivan for those of you who are new to this meeting format. And I serve currently as the president of the Maricopa Community College Governing Board and will be calling this meeting to order. So at this time, I call to order the work session of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of August 9, 2022. Though attending work sessions and agenda review is not mandatory, I will ask for roll call vote of board members who are present. I'll start with our student trustee, Mr. Burnett. Do you happen to be with us this afternoon, Mr. Burnett? Ms. Bittersmith, have you been able to connect with us yet? Mrs. McGrath, are you with us here this afternoon?
I am with you.
I am so glad. Nice to hear your voice. Thank you. Dr. Norene.
I'm here.
Great. Nice to hear your voice as well. Ms. Smith.
President, hello, everyone.
Hello. So great to have you with us. Dr. Thor.
I'm here.
Wonderful. Ms. Nguyen. So with my presence, we have right now five board members who are, who have joined us this afternoon. With that, we have an exciting work session ahead of us. It's something we've worked, as Dr. would remind us, 25 years to get to as a work session. So eager to hear what this is all about. And Dr. Gonzalez, I'm going to turn this to you.
Thank you, President Sullivan and members of the Governing Board, CEC, and our guests that are with us tonight. We have a really exciting presentation tonight. You know, as you said, it's been many years in coming. And over the last year, since this has been approved, a year and a few months ago, this team has done some astounding, outstanding work. And it has really moved mountains to get to this place to where we are. So I want to thank CJ Worster, Dr. CJ Worster and Ms. Halisa Agria for the work that they've done in helping lead this effort. And so what you're going to see is the fruit of all of that leadership and labor by many across the system. I'm happy to report that we remain on schedule, as you're going to see. But you're going to learn a lot more about the bachelor's degrees that we, we hope to offer after we continue the process of seeking your curriculum approval. And of course, getting the approval from HLC on each of the degrees that each of the colleges plans to offer. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Bettina Salas, our acting vice chancellor for Academic and Student Affairs. And she will be joined by Dr. Worster and Ms. Agria to present an update here. Take it away, Bettina.
Thank you, Chancellor. President Sullivan, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of the Governing Board, CEC, colleagues and guests, thank you for the, this opportunity to present to you today. As the Chancellor indicated, presenting with me this afternoon are Ms. Halisa Agria, Faculty District Director of Academic Affairs, and Dr. CJ Worster, interim Vice President of Academic Affairs at Phoenix College, who until just about a week ago was also a member of this team assigned to this work. We, along with Sharon Brooks, Senior Project Manager, and Casey Jacotta, Executive Assistant Senior, are providing the leadership and coordination for this system-wide undertaking. The legislation authorizing community colleges in Arizona to offer the bachelorette outlines considerations related to program offerings such as workforce demand, student demand, financial and resource analysis, and evidence community colleges are not unnecessarily duplicating offerings in the state. These have been addressed in a detailed report shared with you prior to this meeting. Today, we will briefly highlight each of the programs from the legislative lens and provide you with an opportunity to ask questions to support your review and authorization of the programs on August 23rd. Before diving into the details, we'll review the overall timeline.
And do you have a song for us? I thought you were doing that.
I do have a song for you, but Elsa, could you please advance the slide? I have two songs for you, President Sullivan. So the team selected "Don't Stop" by Fleetwood Mac as our inspiration for the meeting today because since the passage of SB 1453, our system has not stopped thinking about tomorrow and the tremendous impact and opportunity these degrees will have on our students and communities.
Wonderful.
And we had a last minute addition to honor the life and music of Olivia Newton-John. We also selected "Hopelessly Devoted to You" as our inspiration for the meeting today since the passage, since our system has been hopelessly devoted to bringing bachelor's degrees to our students and communities.
Oh, wonderful themes. Thank you.
Yeah. This effort has been a tremendous system-level effort utilizing shared governance. We are tremendously proud of our system and how we've worked together to offer bachelor's degrees for our students by fall of 2023. Thank you to all the faculty and staff across Maricopa for their efforts to get us to today and for your support as a governing board. We look forward to your review of this work as we take this historic step as a system for our communities. We're excited to present to you today the fruition of our collective work, the first bachelor's degrees for your authorization, and we are thankful for the continued support as we may meet this historic milestone. Next slide, please. This timeline represents essentially where we are now and identifies the significant milestones that will occur from now through fall 2023 when the initial programs launch. Before I jump into the timeline, I'd like to share that at this time last year, we hadn't even identified the programs that we were going to offer in our initial offering. So the tremendous amount of work that was put forward is really unprecedented. As we shared with you at a work session in May, a significant amount of work has been accomplished in the fall '21 and spring '22 semesters related to program identification, curriculum design and development, and completing and implementing a number of work team deliverables. This work has been collaborative across all of our colleges and the district office. Today, we are bringing forward the full program report package for your review and approval at the Governing Board meeting on August 23rd. It is anticipated that the Higher Learning Commission, as part of their standard process, will conduct a focused visit to our colleges in September and October related to our proposed degrees if your authorization is granted. The goal is to have programs fully approved and prepared for student enrollment during priority registration beginning March 6, 2023, and then ultimately the programs to launch in August 2023. I'll now turn it over to Dr. CJ Worster to take us through the next portion of our presentation. Next slide, please, Elsa.
Thank you, Bettina. The presentation that we have for you today is consistent with the report that you've received, and it contains the areas that are outlined on this slide. We acknowledge that the report is very detailed and also contains a significant amount of information. The reason for this is to ensure that we're in full compliance and providing all of the appropriate and required information pursuant to ARS 15-1444, which authorizes community colleges to offer bachelor's degrees within the state of Arizona. To assist with tracking information as we proceed today, we will be referencing specific pages and sections of the report throughout the discussion. For the sake of time, today we will be presenting an overview of each program, which you will find in the full report beginning on page 5. Specific program details are provided in the pages that then follow, and we will reference those pages as we introduce each program slide. Next slide, please, Elsa. As outlined in the overview section of the packet on pages 2 through 4, the information provided in the report comes from various sources that were used to support the exploration, selection, and the development of these bachelor's degree programs. Workforce and economic data in the state of Arizona were provided by the district's Workforce and Economic Development Office using the sources outlined on this slide. This external data, as well as internal Maricopa enrollment data, was compiled into a comprehensive data dashboard by the Enterprise Analytics and Strategy Team to assist in creating a comprehensive view of program information to support program selection and the report. Assessment plans were developed using standard methodologies of curriculum mapping during the design and development of the programs. The curriculum of the programs, including courses, have been submitted to the Governing Board per the standard Maricopa business process. Next slide, please, Elsa. The legislation requires a financial and resource analysis to be conducted for each new proposed bachelor's degree program. It's important to note that there are costs associated with beginning a new program at any level, whether that be a certificate of completion, an associate's degree, or a bachelor's degree. Colleges have estimated existing resources that will be leveraged to support the launch of their bachelor's degree programs and have also provided an estimate of new resources that would be needed over a five-year period. This work was informed and completed collaboratively by college and district teams. The slide before you represents a summary of these estimated resources for the initial seven programs proposed at eight colleges. The individual program resource data is contained within the report that you have, that you've received. Additionally, although not, not required by the legislation, a conservative estimate of tuition, tuition revenue from the programs was calculated using 23 lower division credits and 37 upper division additional credits that students would not have otherwise taken with us to support their completion of a bachelor's degree. Estimated revenue over the first five years of offering bachelor's degrees is a little bit over $11.8 million. This includes a conservative calculation of attrition rate based on our associate's degree completion. This does not include course or programmatic fees that may be assessed. Budget conversation, budget conversations will continue, and these estimates will continue to be refined as the programs develop over the first five years. Requests for funds to support the launch and growth of these programs will be submitted as a part of the regular budget processes. Next slide, please, Elsa. We would now like to share program highlights with you. Information about the workforce demand, earnings, projected enrollment, and resources are outlined on each program slide and within the report. The Bachelor of Applied Science in Data Analytics and Programming is being proposed to be offered by Mesa Community College and is found on pages 13 through 25 within the report. Next slide, please, Elsa. The Bachelor of Applied Science in Information Technology is being proposed to be offered by Estrella Mountain Community College and Phoenix College and is found on pages 26 through 38 within the report. Next slide, please. The Bachelor of Applied Science in Nuclear Medicine Technology and Computed Tomography is being proposed to be offered by Gateway Community College and is found on page 39 through 50 within the report. The workforce demand for radiography provided in the highlights requires a slight edit, and that will be made available to the Governing Board prior to final approval. Next slide, please, Elsa. The Bachelor of Applied Science in Public Safety Administration is being proposed to be offered by Phoenix College and Rio Salado College and is found on pages 51 through 61 in the report. Next slide, please. The Bachelor of Arts in Early Childhood Education Dual Language is being proposed to be offered by Mesa Community College and is found on page 62 through 76 within the report. Next slide, please. The Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education and Special Education is being proposed to be offered by Glendale Community College, Rio Salado College, and Paradise Valley Community College, and this information can be found on pages 77 through 92 within the report. Next slide, please. And finally, the Bachelor of Science in Behavioral Sciences is being proposed to be offered by South Mountain Community College and is found on pages 93 through 103 within the report. That concludes the program highlight slides. And as you will see in the details contained on the slides and within the comprehensive report, each of these programs meets the legislative requirements, including filling a significant workforce gap that needs to be met within our community. I'll now turn it over to Halisa Agria to take us through the remaining content that you will find in the report. And next slide, please, Elsa.
Thank you, CJ. Included in the report as required by the legislation is a program assessment plan. As you can, this is an example here on the slide. This plan includes the learning outcomes or competencies and concepts being taught in each program and a matrix identifying in what classes each of these outcomes is being introduced, reinforced, met, and assessed at each level. These plans were developed by the faculty subject matter experts and will be operationalized by each college during their standard assessment and program review business processes. Next slide, please, Elsa. The assessment plan also includes the methods and measures that will be employed to assess student learning and the respective benchmarks to determine if students have successfully met the outcomes. Results of these assessment plans will be reviewed by program faculty to inform future program development and refinement of the outcomes, along with input from business advisory councils. Next slide, please, Elsa. Page 104 of the report addresses recruitment and compensation of faculty as outlined as a required element in the legislation. The assumed practices of the Higher Learning Commission do not require that faculty who teach at the bachelor's level to have a minimum qualification of a doctoral degree. It is possible that future bachelor's degree programs may have specific programmatic accreditation requirements related to doctoral faculty. Current pay placement policy is structured so that the system is able to pay an increased amount for faculty with doctorates without limitation. For every residential faculty search, there is always a possibility that the successful candidate will have a doctorate. Consequently, our current financial planning already takes into account the possibility that a new hire will have that doctorate. Next slide, please, Elsa. Formal notification, notification of the intended degrees was sent to Arizona State University on June 1, 2022, by Maricopa's interim executive vice chancellor and provost. No formal response was received from Arizona State University. Bettina Salas will now take us through the next steps for governing board review and approval at the August 23rd meeting. Next slide, please, Elsa.
Thank you, Halise. As an immediate next step, you'll see two bachelor's items on the August 23rd meeting agenda. First is an action item, which contains the report items we highlighted today for your review and authorization of the bachelor's degree programs. Secondly, curriculum for the programs is included in the consent agenda, which is similar to what currently accrue, occurs for certificates of completion and associate degrees. The request that will be made on August 23rd is for authorization of the program. All budget requests related to these programs will ultimately be presented to the board during the regi, regular budgeting cycle for fall 2023. Future year funding will be assessed in their respective cycles. Extensive work was completed to assess how the colleges and system can best leverage existing resources and funding sources in order to develop and deliver a quality program. All programs inherently have associated costs regardless of award level, and as part of the report, you have been provided a financial and resource analysis as required by the legislation. You will see estimated budgets that include existing resources that will be leveraged, as well as projected additional staff and faculty costs. We are committed as a system to ensuring we utilize our current staff and faculty to fill any personnel needs to support the new programs before additional hires are considered. Governing Board approval at this date will provide time for the necessary Higher Learning Commission processes and remaining steps, including Department of Education approval to offer financial aid, federal financial aid to be completed to help us in reaching our goal to launch the programs by fall 2023. Next slide, please, Elsa. Again, if approval is received from you, our governing board, for the proposed initial bachelor's degree program offerings, the substantive change application process to the Higher Learning Commission will be completed immediately thereafter. As mentioned, the HLC has indicated the site visits will be required for these new programs. The visits themselves will consist of a day and a half on-site, where the Higher Learning Commission team will meet with faculty, staff, administrators, students, and industry partners from the offering colleges. Additionally, the HLC has an, has an expressed interest in meeting with our governing board members that are available to participate. Details will be shared with you as they become available to include the actual dates of the visits once confirmed and the opportunities for you to be involved. Next slide, please, Elsa. It was a lot of information, and so we want to thank you for your support and your time this evening. We hope you feel confident that the programs as presented in the report meet the intention of the legislation, and we'll ask for your authorization of our first bachelor's degree offerings on August 23rd. We would also like to take this opportunity to thank again all of the faculty and staff at the colleges and district office who have worked efficiently and collaboratively to make this opportunity possible for our students and communities after 25 years of advocacy. I'd like to also offer a special thank you to the bachelor's leadership team for their leadership and dedication to this work under the direction of our former executive vice chancellor and provost, Dr. Eric Lyschinsky, Associate Vice Chancellor Matt Ashcraft, and myself. And with that, we have come to the end of our presentation and would like to welcome any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation today. Appreciate it the way it was formatted, and thank you for making the references to the larger report so we can follow up with information as we need it in more detail. But it's very possible people have questions as we move forward. And with that, I'm going to start with you, Mrs. McGrath. Do you have any questions for the group this evening?
My only question is one that I'd asked a lot of times before. I kept asking, how much more is this program going to cost? And I kept getting the answer, it's not going to cost anymore. And I kind of think we got an answer today that it will cost more, so thank you.
You're welcome. Any further clarification on that, Mrs. McGrath? Are you satisfied with what you received? Okay, I'll move on, assuming you are. Dr. Norene, do you have any questions?
No, the only, the only question I had was, was cleared up. I was going to ask what the difference was, what we are going to approve in the curriculum section of the consent agenda, and then what we had to approve on the non-consent section, but that question was answered, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Smith, do you have any questions?
Yes, just one question. What do we see, my son John says hello. What do we see as the biggest risks to hitting the desired enrollment targets? And what are we doing to mitigate those risks?
I'm going to toss that question to our team that, around enrollment expectations and risks associated with that. Halise, CJ?
This is Halise. Thank you for that question. The, the, the biggest risk that we have is, is having enough, I would say, is having enough runway for us to do the recruitment necessary for us to hit our projected enrollments. And that, of course, is driven by the timeline of approval on August 23rd, the approval of the Higher Learning Commission, and the Department of Education approval for Title IV aid. So the way we've been mitigating those risks is by really making sure that we stay on target throughout the process so that we could hit the approval dates by being very proactive with the Higher Learning Commission to submit what we can in advance and really collaborating as a system to ensure that we can have the site visits in a timely manner. We're also working with the, the financial aid, on the financial aid side, making sure that we're completely aware of what we need to submit, submitting that on time. And we've been proactive in reaching out to the Department of Education contacts to make sure that we can clear the path for the approvals. In addition, you know, so those are a lot of things to, to, to work out, and some of them beyond our control to, to a large extent. But we've also been working heavily with our marketing and recruitment teams to determine what, and our compliance teams to determine, once we receive governing board approval, what are the active next steps that we can take toward making sure that we can begin to bring in inquiries from students, have them follow us, have them share with us their contact information. That keeps us within the, keeps us within the parameters that the HLC has set, which is essentially, we cannot actively recruit or enroll students in the program until it has HLC approval. So, but there are things that we can actively do, which is put the program information out there once it's governing board approved, and we can collect information from students if they want to know more, be involved, follow us, those types of things. So we have developed a plan with our marketing teams to activate those next steps so we can be proactive while we wait for the necessary approvals. And then, once those approvals are secured, we would then be able to use those contacts to begin our enrollment processes. Thank you.
Any follow-up to that, Ms. Smith?
No follow-up.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Fer, before I call on you, I'm going to call, or state that Ms. Bittersmith has been on, and she has been listening. She's unable to speak, however, so has passed a question along to me to ask on her behalf. And that is, were the public safety providers on campus involved in the curriculum process of the public safety admin degree, program curriculum? Could someone answer that question for Ms. Bittersmith, please?
Halise, again, I'll, so I'll ask Halise to respond to the specifics of the design and development portion of that degree. But for all of the degrees, we include, the development of the actual curriculum involves an extensive inclusion of a number of industry representatives, faculty members, and others. We, we have had some meetings with the representatives of the Maricopa Public Safety Representatives who expressed an interest in, in partnering in that. And with that, I'll toss it to Halise to talk about specifically who might have been included in that.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Halise again. Yes, we, as part of the design and development process, as Bettina says, it is our standard practice to try to involve employer partners. And so we actually kicked off the design and development of the public safety degree with, I think it was around, don't hold me to this number. It was, I think, around 30 individuals from different agencies within the state of Arizona. This degree for public safety serves not only law enforcement, but also administration of justice, public administration, paramedicine, fire science. So it is a very comprehensive degree, and the employer partners and agencies were there in that process where we do sort of initial brainstorming around what we hope to achieve. What is the learning and end goals that we're hoping to achieve with the degree? So we spent a good couple of hours with them, getting that information from them, and then framing that into the outcomes and into the courses that were going to be required into the program. Between each of the design and development sessions, which was over 40 hours, which is why we can't, employer partners usually can't do the whole thing with us because they're very, very busy. But between those sessions, we share out the progress on those degrees. And then we also closed out the public safety of design and development by inviting those partners back to the table and presenting the degree to them and collecting feedback at that time. And then also built into our regular processes, we mentioned in the presentation, is we regularly touch base on a annual basis, and both Phoenix College and Rio Salado, who will be offering this program, are tremendous at this, and they have really good relationships with these agencies. They work with them on a yearly basis to review our programs, all of our programs, and the bachelor's degree would be included, to refine and continuously ensure that our degrees are meeting our employer and agency needs.
Okay, thank you very much. That was, I believe, what Mrs. Bittersmith wanted to know. So with that, I'm moving to you, Dr. Thor. Do you have any questions?
Of course I have questions.
And yes, I saved you for the last. Here we go.
I figured that was your strategy. Before I ask my questions, I just want to join the chancellor in thanking and congratulating this team on just a tremendous amount of really outstanding work. I'm just so very, very proud of everyone and this product. So on the, the additional funding that would be required, reference was made uh, reference was made to the likelihood of using, uh, funds from Proposition 207. Uh, are we also looking at the possibility of Proposition 301?
Bettina, you want me to take that? But this is Kim.
Absolutely. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. President Sullivan and Dr. Thor, um, Kim Garnio, Vice Chancellor for Business Services. So, yes, uh, Dr. Thor, I would say that any and all resources are on the table. Um, uh, uh, obviously Prop 207 can be used in this space and also Prop 301. We will be doing an analysis for, uh, the fiscal twenty-four budget of both of those, um, sources of funds, if you will, and be trying to determine where best to use those resources.
Uh, thank you. And this is also probably a question for you, Kim. Uh, uh, reference was made to the anticipated amount of tuition for the upper division courses. Uh, was the assumption that the upper division tuition would be a hundred and fifty percent of the lower division tuition?
Uh, President Sullivan and Dr. Thor, um, yes, that is the assumption we used when we built, uh, that estimate. And so that you will see part, you will see that, sorry, you will see that included in the tuition presentation that we have in the September work session, um, to be followed up with a, a first read, uh, item for, I believe, October's meeting to consider, uh, tuition changes. But, but yes, that estimate is included at the hundred and fifty percent of basic tuition.
Okay, thank you. Um, so for each program, references made to uh, other Arizona institutions with similar programs. And forgive me if this information is in the, the larger report. But to the, these institutions include both public and private institutions? Um, a- and if private, uh, does it also include for-profits?
Um, President Sullivan, Dr. Thor, yes. So the analysis includes all programmatic offerings in the state of Arizona, uh, all of the categories that you indicated, public, private, uh, and for-profit.
But they have to be o- offering it as a bachelor's degree, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So then my next question is, so to take, uh, one of the specific programs, early childhood. So you indicated that there were twenty-four institutions that offer a similar program. Would that be just early childhood or is that specifically early childhood with the dual language emphasis?
So the, that particular data point is based on the SIP code. So this is where, uh, we get into a little bit of specifics related to the program. So it's all programs that were categorized using that SIP code, um, specifically in the state. So it may not be dual language specifically, but it would be early childhood with some type of emphasis, um, in that field, if that makes sense. It's, it's a really, it's based on the categorization.
So the same thing would be true, say, uh, of the education degrees, that the number of institutions that were cited aren't necessarily offering the dual certification in both elementary and special ed?
That is correct. It is at the rolled up SIP level. So at the elementary.
So it does, it does appear somewhat misleading then, that there are more institutions offering this specific degree than really is the case.
Correct. It would be the broader umbrella of elementary education in that particular, uh, broadly across the state, not in that particular emphasis area.
Okay. And then my last question, uh, relates to the visits by the Higher Learning Commission. So are we anticipating that there's going to be, say, eight teams? One visiting each of the colleges that are offering, planning to offer one or more degrees? Are, will there be eleven teams, one for each of the programs that we're offering? Or will there be one team looking, say, at the three colleges that are offering the education, uh, bachelor's degree? Do we know?
So some of those det- uh, Dr. Thor, some of those details are still being finalized with the Higher Learning Commission. But in our conversations with our liaison, um, they expressed an interest in meeting with the colleges, uh, that had the shared programs and then doing, conducting the individual site visits. But the team composition, we're still, uh, they still have not, um, shared with us. So as those details become available to us, we'll be happy to share that.
Okay. So it's possible, in terms of, 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 of what you need from the governing board, that we could be meeting with as many as eight teams?
In a worst-case scenario, yes.
Okay.
There are four dates that have been provided to us.
Uh-huh.
So it would be four dates that we would be looking at. But depending on the team composition, it could be up to eight, yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Uh, President Sullivan, that's all of my questions.
Are you sure?
Well, I have to save some for two weeks from now, huh?
Well, thank you. I think, oh, your, uh, questions provide a lot of, a lot more thorough information for the rest of us as board members. And I always appreciate your dedication to this topic. Thank you very much. Um, and so a lot of my, or several of my questions were answered by the, uh, questions from the other board members. And I thank you very much, Bettina and team, for all of your hard work on this area and working so hard to ensure that we understand our responsibilities to approving this very important new aspect of our programs and curriculum and degrees. So thank you so much for that. Anything else, Dr. Solis, is, in group, that you want to know from us as board members before we get into our agenda review and then, two weeks from now, our board meeting?
President Sullivan, no, no other questions from us, but please know that our team's available. Uh, as you have an opportunity to review in more depth. We're happy to follow up with you individually or collectively with any questions you might have in anticipation of the twenty-third. We appreciate the support and advocacy of our board and look forward to, uh, the next steps in this process.
Great. And yes, uh, board members, if you do have any questions, you could send them via email and the responses would come to all of us. Uh, so we'll all be informed. So thank you again. And Dr. Gonzalez, any closing comments for this work session?
Well, President Sullivan, again, thank, uh, the board for its leadership and support on this, um, important project. And, um, again, and I want to thank the, uh, the presenters here and, and all the faculty and staff across the district for their commitment, dedication and good work here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so with that, I am going to conclude our work session. Give us three minutes to catch our breath, maybe five, before, uh, Elsa, well, there you are, Elsa, you're all on top of this. Put everything reposted. So board members, if you're ready, and unless we can find a way for Ms. Bittersmith to join us with words, um, shall we move ahead? Any possibility, Elsa, do you know of having Ms. Bittersmith join us? Or is this, as it's going to, as it is now, is that the way it will be today?
I think it's just what it is. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, so, uh, Ms. Bittersmith, I know you can hear us. So if you have further questions as we move through the agenda, just text me and we'll get those asked. Or comments, any comments you have. Uh, so here we are. Now, again, I'd like to repeat that we are live captioning our meetings. So please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. Tonight is the beginning of a new six months, of, uh, five months of work on behalf of the board and us together. And I want to welcome the board back from our month hiatus. And, uh, as I call to order the agenda review meeting, I also want to acknowledge that we have many other new individuals present with us this evening and want to welcome you as well. Thank you for joining our district and thank you for the hard work that you will have committed to do to ensure that we're providing the best education possible and building the best workforce in the state of Arizona. Thank you. So at this time, I call to order the agenda review meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of August nine, twenty twenty-two. Today, we are going to review the agenda for the August twenty-three, twenty twenty-two board meeting. Again, for the record, I'm going to call a roll, call vote of board members. Uh, Mr. Burnett. Ms. Bittersmith, I know is present. Mrs. McGrath.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Norene.
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor.
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen. With my present, uh, six board members, our president, our student advisory member is not with us this evening, nor is Ms. Nguyen. So as you know, uh, we generally go through an agenda review process, again, to the new folks. And what we're going to do is follow the agenda as it might, as it will be presented, consent agenda information and also those for action. I want to acknowledge that there is a possibility that on the August twenty-three meeting, the agenda will look a little different than we've been traditionally used to. At our last board retreat, it was commented on that we might have a way to be more efficient and, uh, collaborative with our community in how we look at the agenda and offer and create the opportunity for us to participate in decision-making. So with that, uh, that is being reviewed and I don't want to say that there's going to be any big surprises, but, uh, there may be some modifications. However, there will always be a consent agenda. And as we note, on today's agenda is presented by Ms. Lucius on the board in front of us. I'm going to start there. So as we look through the consent agenda for the August twenty-three meeting, we will have several emeritus distinctions to acknowledge. And then we are going to move to item six on that agenda, which is approval of acceptance of transfer from the Maricopa County Community College District Foundation, a new grant award from the Helios Foundation for the Hispanic Serving Institutions, i.e. Excellence Retention Program for the period from nine one twenty-two to eight thirty-one twenty-five in the amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Board members, do you have any comments or questions on this item?
I, I had one quick question.
Yes, Dr. Norene.
On, let's see, on page sixty, I think it's page sixty-three of, of the agenda, I, I think I wanted to be the, the East Valley Regional Coordinator. They're making two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, while the regional coordinator at West Valley is making thirty-nine thousand. Is there, and then on, on, if we go back to page thirty-four, it looks like they're making seventy-five thousand dollars each. I didn't know if that was, if I'm missing something there.
Uh, Dr. Gonzalez, is there someone on your team who can answer that this evening?
Yes, I'm certainly hoping that someone can answer that question. I would defer to either Ms. Garnio or, I don't believe that, um, Dr. Kelly is with us this evening. And, and, um, I believe that her substitute would be.
Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
This is Bettina. Uh, on item six, uh, that, that, uh, grant award is, uh, being handled by Dr. Brock and her team. If you'd like to have her speak to that, it may just have been a typographical error. And we can review that and, and provide positive confirmation on that and an adjustment if necessary.
Thank you.
Dr. Brock, do you have anything you'd like to add?
She's being moved over to a panelist currently and she'll be able to speak in just a minute.
Okay. And if we don't have the item in front of us, we can definitely follow up on that. Uh, it, it, from my first glance, Dr. Uh, Dr. Norene, it may have been a typographical error. We can follow up and get back to you definitively.
Okay, thank you.
And that answer also would come to the entire board in an email? Just as a point of order on that?
Yes, that would be, we would do that.
Uh, would you like sway for Dr. Brock or would you, shall they move on?
She is available now.
Dr. Brock, do you have any comment at this moment?
Hello, I will just have to follow up. I have to pull that up and get with the foundation quickly. I believe it's probably a typo.
Okay, thank you.
Tomorrow morning.
It'll be disappointing for the East Valley Coordinator, but it's, hopefully it's just a typo.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions on item six? So the board will expect some follow-up on that item and question. Item seven, approval of acceptance of transfer from Maricopa Community Colleges Foundations for Apple Inc., uh, grant the Technopreneur and, gosh, MITI, the Enterprise Pathway Programs at Mesa Community College in the amount of one hundred and six thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. Sorry. Any comments or questions on that? Being none, item eight, approval of acceptance of Intel Donation to Support Semiconductor Manufacturing Technician Training Program at Chandler-Gilbert, Estreem Mountain and Mesa Community Colleges in the amount of a hundred and sixty-three thousand, a hundred and sixty-three, five hundred thousand dollars. Any comments or questions? Being none, I believe item nine has been, uh, called for greater clarification. Dr. Gonzalez, do you have a comment on item nine?
Uh, yes, President Sullivan, um, we're, we're, we don't have that item ready for the board, uh, to review in its current state. Uh, we anticipate that we will actually have this ready for your review, um, in a different form by, uh, the September board meeting. So I'd like to remove it at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Right, then we'll move on to, uh, what's currently, item ten, approval of acceptance of new grant award of four hundred and twenty-three, nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars from the U.S. Department of Defense Logistics Agency Office of Small Business Programs to the Maricopa Community College District or the Arizona Small Business Development Center Network to operate the Arizona Procurement Technical Assistance Center. Any comments or questions? Item eleven, approval of acceptance of U.S. Department of Education Upward Bound Grant to Grand Way Community College in the amount of three hundred and twelve, four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars year one. Any comments or questions? Item twelve, approval of acceptance of new grant award from U.S. Department of Education to South Mountain Community College for year one of Trio Upward Bound Program from nine one twenty-two to eight thirty-one twenty-three in the amount of two hundred and ninety-seven, uh, six hundred and one thousand dollars. Item thirteen, approval of acceptance of continuing grant award from the National Science Foundation to South Mountain Community College for year five of collaborative research, transfer to interdisciplinary natural sciences program for the period one fifteen twenty-two to twelve thirty-one twenty-two in the amount of a hundred and sixty, two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Any comments or questions? Being none, item fourteen, approval of acceptance of continuing grant award from the National Science Foundation to Glendale Community College for year five of collaborative research, transfer to interdisciplinary natural sciences program for the period one fifteen twenty-two to twelve thirty-one twenty-two in the amount of two hundred and seven, uh, twenty-seven thousand dollars. And I know I'm butchering that, so sorry.
President Sullivan?
Yes.
Um, this would relate to number thirteen-two. Uh, the period of the grant award is January fifteenth, twenty twenty-two through the end of this calendar year. Uh, it's now August ninth. Why are we just now getting this?
Dr. Gonzalez?
Uh, thank you, President Sullivan, uh, Dr. Thor. I'm looking to the, the sponsors of each of these and that would be, um, Bettina Solis and also the college president. So that asks them to provide a response.
I will defer to the college president on this one. I, my apologies, chancellor.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this is, um, Sherry Olson. I can look into it and get it back to you. I, I don't have the answer to that question. But I can send it to, but via email tomorrow.
Thank you.
It'd also be for Glendale, same question. It'd also be for Glendale, same question.
Dr. Laborriece, are you on and perhaps have a, a response that you could provide tonight? Or do we need to wait until you can do some research on that as well?
Hello, hi, I'm sorry, this is Carrie Laborriece. I'm here. And I apologize, I do not have an answer, but I will have that answer for you tomorrow as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the question, Dr. Thor. Moving on to item fifteen, approval for the purchase and installation of three backup power generators from Titan Power at Glendale Community Colleges main and north campuses for the combined amount of $691,162,23. Any comments or questions? Moving on to item sixteen, approval of curriculum items, bachelor programs. There are seven new academic programs, there are modifications to occupational programs, there are modifications for eight. And in courses, new seventy, or seventy-eight with, and modifications for twenty-seven. So any comments or questions? That's quiet on that one. Thank you. Item seventeen, approval of mission vision and values through Gateway Community College. I have a question on this one, Dr. Gonzalez. I appreciate that we're involved in the strategic planning process for the entire district. And at this time, we're approving then the mission vision and values for a college. And I'm curious how this will align, if there is modifications for the district's vision, mission vision and values, and its impact on individual colleges as they prepare theirs.
Sure, President Sullivan. First, I suspect that the process that Gateway was under, was well underway before we started ours because their, it looks like their strategic plan was expiring. And then HLC also requires that each of the independently accredited colleges always have a board-approved latest mission vision and values. I suspect that that's what's happening. The expectation for Gateway and the rest of the colleges will be that upon completion of our strategic enrollment, or, excuse me, our strategic planning process, that each of the colleges will then, you know, take time to review their strategic plans and their own mission vision values and college goals and values and make sure that there is alignment to the one created by the, the system that we're currently working on. I'll, I'll give Dr. Diaz an opportunity to respond. And if there isn't anything different, Dr. Diaz, no need to respond. Otherwise, feel free to, to chime in on providing additional justification to this request.
Thank you, President Sullivan and Chancellor Gonzalez. That is accurate. Our strategic plan had expired during COVID and it gave us a chance to look at our mission vision and values as well, especially as we begin to offer a bachelor's degree. And we have a four-year, HLC four-year assurance argument coming due in one year. And it was important for us to have an updated mission, vision, values, and strategic plan prior to our peer review visit in October of 2023.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. Board members, do you have any other comments or questions on that? Being none, we'll move to approval to authorize the lease of kitchen suite at Rio Salado College, the Thomas location, to Local First Arizona Foundation for thirty-six months, beginning September 1, 2022. Are there any comments or questions on that? Being none, item nineteen, approval of extension of current intergovernmental agreement with City of Peoria for the Arizona Small Business Development Center for the period from 7/122 to 6/3023 with additional funds in the amount of $106,937.25. And once again, that's the July 1 start date on that issue. Dr. Gonzalez just pointing out to be consistent with our previous earlier question around dates. Item twenty, approval of renewal of current intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Public Safety to provide off-duty police assistance at State Farm Stadium in Glendale, Arizona during special events through June 30, 2027. There any comments or questions on item twenty? Item twenty-one, approval of state university license agreements for use of office space at colleges by Arizona's universities for five years, beginning 7/122 for Glendale Community and Phoenix Colleges. Any comments or questions? Being none, moving to item twenty-two, approval of contracts for executive and senior leadership development consultation, executive coaching and training services with Academic Search Academy for Advanced Leadership and Higher Performance Group. Are there any comments or questions on this? Being none, item twenty-three, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Gateway Community College and the Western Maricopa Education Center to provide educational services for emergency medical technician students at multiple GWC locations. Are there any comments or questions on that?
President Sullivan?
Yes, go ahead.
May I go back to twenty-two for a minute?
Sure.
As I understand this item, we solicited proposals from these firms. And they're now going on a list to be called upon as needed to provide executive coaching and senior leadership development. I'm curious as to why this is coming to us.
Dr. Gonzalez?
Sure, President Sullivan, Dr. Thor, I have Dr. Frank Wilson on who may be able to offer an explanation to your question, an answer to your question.
President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of CEC. The, the reason it's coming to the board is the thought was that the overall cost of this might ultimately exceed $250,000 in services costs. For that reason, it was being brought to the board.
Meaning not necessarily with one firm, but all of the firms combined?
Correct. So then, this is a menu of options that the colleges can choose from. And with all the different options, what they might choose, the, the expectation was that the cost might exceed the 250,000.
Okay.
Which is why it's coming to the board.
Okay, all right. So just so that we're covered, should we find ourselves in that situation?
That is correct, Dr. Thor.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
Preventative. Yeah, good. Any other comments or questions? Back to item twenty-three. Okay. With that, then, we'll move in, on our agenda for the 23rd to non-consent action items. The first one will be the approval of seven proposed bachelor's degree programs to be offered at eight colleges in the Maricopa County Community College District beginning fall of 2023. We had the earlier presentation and Dr. Thor is saving some questions for the 23rd. But other than that, are there any comments or questions this evening about that presentation, or non-consent action item for August 23rd? Okay. And then, as we had previously presented to us, on the 23rd, we'll have the second read and adoption of proposed new policy for staff policy manual regarding professional growth. Are there any comments or questions on that item? So both of those items will be up for votes at our next meeting. Then we move to first read and information. We have item one, the employment and separations of May 21, 22 through June 7, 2022. Any comments or questions on that? And then we also have an item number two, the Arizona Auditor General Presentation of Maricopa County Community College District's Fiscal Year 2021 Audit Reports and Results Pursuant to ARS, Section 15-1473F. Ms. Grineau, can you offer us comment this evening why that will be in an information, why that item is in an information category and what can we expect?
Most certainly. Thank you, President Sullivan. Some members of the board, we wanted to provide a little bit more context for this item as it is something that is new for us and actually our state. In September of 2021, the Arizona Legislature passed House Bill 2906 requiring that the Auditor General's office present its reports and findings to governance during a regular meeting, starting with the fiscal year 21 audit report. For Maricopa, our single audit was a bit delayed and was issued in June of 2022, resulting in these reports being presented at this month's regular board meeting. The reports are included in the 8/23, the actual reports are included in the August 23 agenda as an information item is noted. And the audit manager will be with us on that day at that meeting to present their reports and resulting findings to you as part of the information item. As I understand it, there will be around eight slides that will be presented and when it will take somewhere between 10 and 15 minutes to go through the slides. And then, once that presentation is completed, the members of the board will be able to ask questions of the auditors at that time. The reports which were emailed to all of the members when they were issued are also attached to the information item as part of, in board docs. The report on internal control and compliance, as well as the single audit report, each include relatively few findings and also include Maricopa's corrective action plans as response to the findings. Since this is a new process and we'll see how the, the regular meeting goes in a couple of weeks, we will continue to evaluate and modify the report out approach as needed within, of course, the statutory requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grineau. Appreciate that information. So what we can expect after our votes and the first read will have then this presentation. So it'll be duly noted by board members. After that, we'll move into our monitoring reports. You can see, or, and both of those will be budget analysis reports for Fund One with one 12 months ending 6/30/2022 and the other one for the new fiscal year with one month ending 7/31/22. We'll move into our community board reports. And I just want to remind board members, we have some important in-person meetings coming up, beginning next week. Our August 23 meeting will start with an e-session at 5:00 PM and then we'll move into the regular meeting at 6:30 PM. As also a reminder, we're going to continue agenda reviews online and then we will meet in person for our regularly scheduled meetings. There are September meetings already scheduled, September 13 and September 27. We will be meeting in person at the Rio Salado Conference Center. It's a lot of information to be giving out right now, so we'll follow up with that through Ms. Macias's office. Also, again, there may be some modifications to this agenda format and look forward to having us be more, as topical and as collaborative as possible in those modifications. So just, we'll, we'll get there. And hope to start with that on our August 23 meeting. So unless there's anything from the board members for the good of the order, speak up now if you can want to. If not, I'm going to adjourn our meeting and thank everyone for their time this evening. And I look forward to meeting with everyone on, gosh, August 23 in person. Oh my, that'll be, that's a special occasion. So thank you all very much for your attendance and may you have a good rest of the evening. Thank you. Good night.